Here.
Present.
Here.
May I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Women?
No. Second.
Have a motion in a second to excuse Councilwoman Women. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve this agenda?
Sir, what?
They have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented tonight. Is there any discussion? Is there any note for the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion is carried. Now we move on to citizens' comments. At this time, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on the agenda? There was none on the agenda tonight. Comments are restricted to three minutes. We ask that if the record of the council does not hold on individuals, Carol, go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Carol Peterson, 7871 Main Avenue, Southeast, on lockdown. So forth. I'd like to say to you folks on the City Council, in terms of Charles passing, only one thing he said to me, and this was before he was called back for the term in office when he thought he was retiring about six, seven years ago, he said, "Carol, you know the one thing I like? I like my name on that council door for City Council Chambers. He and I and our children would like it to say, Charles S. Peterson, City Chambers." That's something that you can do in memory of him. You did not want a park named after him. You did not want a street named after him. You just wanted his name on this building. This building meant a lot to him, not only getting it built here, but also getting it in downtown Snoqualmie was very important to him. Secondarily, there is another issue that you'll probably be discussing at some time, the old library building sitting next door. I know it needs a lot of refurbishing inside now. Charles was responsible for getting that building here in the first place almost single-handedly. He made contacts when he was mayor and later when we finally decided we needed a new library. He at the time had a city hall, police department, fire department, library, and administration all adoring his little building. That was torn down, fortunately, and one of the things that replaced it was that library. We were $20,000, and I say we because I love it, probably started to see this, to have a library in downtown Snoqualmie. We were $20,000 short. That was a lot of money back then. Today, we could probably go hand to hand and just get it. And to do that, he had made a lot of friends, of course, of a warehouse where he worked. And he went to the bosses, even though he was the head of the union, who went to his management bosses and got $20,000 out of them. And they agreed to do that. And of course, one room there was named the warehouse room, which was very appropriate. That building, if it ever refurbished and brought up to date, which is being used by scouting troops, et cetera, very close to Chuck's heart, knowing that all the kids in the community are using that building, we would love to see that building also as a memorial, the City Hall Annex, Charles S. Peterson Annex for the City Hall. And those are the two things that we really would like to see as a family. And the first one, as I mentioned, Charles mentioned to me himself, that he would like to have. So when you start thinking about things you might feel in your memory, please keep those two things in mind, particularly the easy thing to write Charles S. Peterson on those council doors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens of Snoqualmie. I'd just like to say, if we could all please just speak clearly into the microphone so we can hear everybody, it's a packed house, and it's really hard for me to read lips. So when I can't hear what you're saying when your hands are in front of your microphone, that would be much appreciated for all of us. Thank you.
Monica Lamy, 493, P.O., Box 4, Snoqualmie. I really liked what Carol just said, and I agree, I think that Charles needs to have some kind of recognition in the city. He lived here most of his life. He made a huge impact on the community. I know there were a lot of things that Charles fought for. One was the city not selling that library building next door, and otherwise, I believe, not selling a lot next to Bulleye Hall, which I understand has already been offered to Segal Winery to build the free story building on. Back to Charles, I would just like to say that he was an extraordinary council member. I felt that he really fought for not only downtown residents, but also the Ridge, and brought people together in this community. And I hope that we have more of that in the future. He will sorely be missed, which is why I'm running for his position, number six for City Council. I actually helped campaign for Charles because I believed in his views. But back to the property issues, what's not on the agenda, I'm just curious to know why the little brick bank building that was our historical significance and landmark of Snoqualmie residents, why that was sold next to the hardware store here downtown? Also, why the, I'm hearing the band Breakfast that burned down is in the process of being sold. We have another city piece of property sold on the main road here, and now we know that the large lot that needed for parking, or was supposed to be a park, is now being offered to Segal Winery. So I'm just hoping that at some point, the city will be transparent and explain to their residents whether they're selling off for historical significance and for what reason they are selling these properties and why they're not going on the open market to the highest bidder. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. For those that want to comment on the noise ordinance, there is a public hearing coming following the citizens' comments. And a short answer to the properties, as many of those properties need to be repolished, anybody else? Shirley.
Shirley Lewski, 8818 Norman Avenue, Southeast. First of all, I think, I must say, but I do want to say that I hope that you all know that I totally respect everything that you have done in this community. I love this community. I enjoy living here. I know that sometimes your jobs are, and I know all the extra efforts that you put in. But that being said, and that includes all the city staff, so what I'm going to say, I hope that no one takes offense to, because it's not meant to be offensive. I came to a meeting the other night, and I was somewhat surprised to find out that there will not be any public hearing where people will, if those citizens of Snoqualmie can speak on an issue concerning any kind of parcel of property in Snoqualmie. Now, normally, I've been here for eight years, and there has always been a public hearing for any kind of minor modifications. And the city consult has voted whether they wanted to pass those modifications or not. I'm not here to say I am for the cause or against the cause, what I'm here to say is, you are my representative. I voted for all of you or some of you were appointed. You are my voice and the voice of all these people. Any minor modification that has come through, we have a comprehensive plan that states what our expectations are in the city and what we expect of the developers. With that being said, I know that the school board has had to come in front of you. I've been here when they've done it. The developers for the Hilton Hotel have had to come in front of you. The developer for the, um, I don't know, supermarket, that development, that commercial development, the development for Woodland Apartments has had to come in front of you. Other ordinances have come in front of you, and I've spoken for or against them, and I have respected every single decision that you've made. I might not agree with someone, but I've respected them because I know that you have put in the work as well as the city staff to do that. This development is different, and I, as a citizen, want to know why aren't the city council, why aren't you asking, hey, why isn't this coming in front of me? Whatever your decision is on that, whether you vote yes or whether you vote no, why isn't it coming in front of you?
Shirley, Shirley, may I just add, because I'm somebody on the council that might be confused too. Could you be more specific about what meeting you're talking about and what development you're talking about?
I'm talking about SR 20, I believe.
Okay, so the definite development, okay.
Right.
In what meeting?
It was Monday, last Monday.
Okay.
So my question, and I have reached out to all the council people that were involved in the meeting and asked why. I understand that there is an excuse, and I understand it's an excuse, I understand that.
Shirley, I'm going to hold you to three minutes, but I can answer real quickly. That was a working council committee meeting. It's up to the chair, and it's very unusual for any committee chair to allow public comment at a committee meeting. That meeting maybe looked like a regular council meeting, but it was only known because there might have been a quorum available. So it was not a council meeting, it was a working committee meeting, there were no decisions made at that meeting, it was simply recommendations for protocols and schedules.
I know. And that was explained, and I understand that.
Okay.
What I don't understand is why aren't the minor modifications, like every other project, coming in front of?
Okay, Shirley, so Mark Hoffin is in the back of the room, and he can, I thought that was explained quite clearly at the meeting, but Mark would be, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to wrap you up because there's a lot of people waiting, and I have to respect everybody's time. But please just talk to Mark briefly, standing back at the window.
Mr. Mayor, I have reached out to Mr. Sterling to talk to this stuff, and I would like to. So I would really like to.
Mark is right there. Mark puts his hand up so Shirley can see him. And you're welcome to go talk to him right now, he can either talk to you.
Mr. Mayor, I think what she's talking about is legalities around whether or not...
Oh, no, we don't have time to...
I'm not suggesting we have time now, but I think we'd like to talk with Mr. Sterling.
At some point, someone's going to yell point of order. Again, I've got to respect three minutes of the public moment. This isn't the time to have a debate and discussion.
Hold on, I'm asking for a debate, I'm just asking for the city council to please represent the city by the way.
Thank you, Shirley. Is there anybody else that would like to comment? Yes, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Schulte. I've just got a few questions, I don't know if you can answer them or not.
On the phone, please.
Sorry. If you can't answer them, please do. These are questions regarding the affordable housing development of this woman who's talking shortly. But my, these questions were asked last Monday, but since it wasn't on record, I'll put one record. And the questions are, how many affordable homes have been built and are still affordable under, I believe, the 2009 modification? The second question is, when did the time limit start, the 25-year time limit, start taking effect on the modified one agreement? The third question, is there anything in the agreement that states that homes must be built to include SR 2? And if there isn't, after the 25 years, and there are zero homes built, do, does the lot disclose straight market value? You can do whatever you want on it, and is it no longer affordable? So that wraps up that.
Okay, that's your question. Shirley, Bob Stravain, so that he can go up and discuss these issues with you and this gentleman on that particular project right now, if you'd like. So if you'll raise your hand, we could send Bob over. But thank you for your questions. Much of that information is available online to our website right now, and our staff is happy to follow up with them. Is there anybody else that would like to comment, a public comment this time? Any issues that are not on the agenda? Peggy?
I think you're going to be voting on whether to do the 60-day calendar, but that's being proposed by the Finance Administration Committee. And I sent an email to the mayor and the city council about the fact that we haven't been following the procedure as outlined by the county, and I think that we have skipped several steps. We haven't allowed enough time for public input onto our process, and they haven't gotten anything. And I think they need to understand what that decision would require as far as whether or not to sign a petition. And all those things should be happening prior to when the 60-day clock starts. So I don't know if you've had a chance to read that email, but there's several publications that have been put out by the county regarding the process for annexation. And I feel that we either stop this stage of that annexation now or have a developer withdraw until we can complete three steps prior to where we should be now. We're leapfrogging over the process.
Thank you, Peggy. Just for anyone else who wants to comment on that, that is on the agenda, but if you just hold your comments on that, I didn't tell that it's on the agenda. Peggy, I know the city attorney didn't respond to your contention that they were not following protocols, and I just want to put on the record, since you're videotaping it for your website, that you were corrected, and the city attorney pointed, you know, every verse and section that in fact they did follow the protocol. So is there anyone else that would like to comment, please? All right. With that, we'll move on to public hearing presentations, proclamations, and appointments. At this time, the public hearing regarding the proposed amendments to an ordinance amending Snoqualmie Municipal Code, Section 9.35.020, to provide for seasonal exception to public disturbance noise limitations for musical or other events sponsored by downtown and Snoqualmie Ridge businesses, is now open. Carol, is there a sign-up sheet back there?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Go.
So your address is before, down the street. And yes, regarding noise ordinance, I do live just down the street. I'm within earshot of many things, the casino, outdoor entertainment when they have it, certainly Bindle Sticks when they have theirs, et cetera. I'm not so opposed to the 10 o'clock going to 11 o'clock. What I'm opposed to is the decibel level. Don't we have an ordinance, or do we have an ordinance with the decibel level? Bindle Sticks, I guess unfortunately for me, their music does not appeal to me, and it is so godly loud that it's impossible for me to certainly get to bed before that hour, not that I normally do, but even watching TV is difficult. I would like to keep it at 10:00 p.m. because of the fact that it is so loud. It outdoes the fireworks, and we had multiple fireworks in my driveway this year. It was very loud and made a mess. So please, if this does pass for some reason, to extend it to 11 o'clock, which I hope it does not, please consider a decibel level that can be monitored and enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Well, say this desk, refrain from booing or applauding, just to respect the current with the team. Tracy, go ahead. Tracy, neither.
Hi, my name is Tracy Neither. I live at 7931 Maple Avenue, just down the street, a couple houses down from Carol. This is my first public hearing, so bear with me. I have notes. I've lived in Snoqualmie for 25 years, and this is my first public speaking here at the council, because this issue is so important to me. This, because of the, sorry, my train of thought. We're very much opposed to changing the noise ordinance to 11:00 p.m. on the weekends during the summer. Noise is a big issue for the people here in Snoqualmie. We have heard over the years, many people complain about the noise of the casino concerts, they're racing at Dirtfish, and these are particularly, now that we are so close to downtown, Bindle Sticks, their concerts are incredibly loud. We have a daughter with autism who would like to go to bed at this kind of night and can't because it is so loud in her bedroom. Not everyone has a Monday through Friday job. My husband works on Saturday, he's up at 3:30 in the morning, so he would like to get to bed at a reasonable hour, and really, anybody, any other resident should have a reasonably quiet evening on a weekend. There are four toddlers that live on my street. I would think it's reasonable to expect that they shouldn't hear loud music on the weekends late into the night. Stretchwood St. Michelle in Woodville has their concerts over at 10 o'clock. Because of their noise ordinance, I don't think Snoqualmie should be any different. If this were to pass, would this mean then that the casino would play till 11 o'clock? Would the proposed amphitheater play till 11 o'clock? I see a real problem happening here in Snoqualmie, where there potentially could be, all of these venues could be playing at the same time every weekend all summer. This sets a precedent for all use and development. Being that we're in a valley, the noise carries so much farther, and it has upset very many people here, the negative impacts to the residents of Snoqualmie should outweigh anything else. We implore you to vote no on the amendment to the noise ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neither. Lester Shepherd.
Hello, I'm Leslie Shepherd. Ooh, that's loud. And I'm at P.O., Box 1656 in Snoqualmie. I just wanted to say that I've heard in reference to getting lighted fields for our children, that that would disrupt the rural character of Snoqualmie. So I would imagine if getting...
Are you ready for your question?
I'm getting there. That if the response is the light pollution is going to be disrupting the rural character of Snoqualmie, I would imagine that the noise pollution would also be disruptive of the rural character of Snoqualmie. I also believe, like the speakers before me, that this is a slippery slope. If we go to 11 o'clock here, the casino is going to say, well, they're doing it, so why shouldn't we? And I also believe that this is going to apply to the Millsite Amphitheater, if that indeed gets built. In going to the Millsite Environmental Scoping Meeting, I would say that 20, 25 people got up and spoke against the amphitheater for noise pollution reasons. So I certainly would hope that the council would take all of the residents' feelings about this noise pollution into careful consideration before voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Monica Lamy.
Monica Lamy, P.O., Box 4, Snoqualmie. I agree with the previous speakers, Carol Leslie especially. As most of you know, Leslie and I are running for city council, so we've been going door to door and talking to a lot of residents up on the ridge, and not one person has been pro to this noise ordinance extension. They are very opposed to it, and they're extremely opposed to the thought of a amphitheater at the Millsite. So the letter that emailed out to everyone, which I'm sure was quite costly, talks about a form-based mixed-use district, but there's no explanation of what that is. So I can only assume that that would include the Millsite and the Snoqualmie Casino, maybe. Bob would be willing to elaborate on that because it's very vague. However, if the Bindle Stick, which I was at the city council meeting, one business owner requested extending the noise ordinance from 10 to 11, and the city jumped on spending $3,000 to $4,000 to mail these out, putting a rush on having a vote the next city council meeting, I would like to urge city council members to listen to and see people here tonight who are very concerned. If you have not gone to our website, that's snoqualmefirst.com, and watched the Millsite presentation, open house, you'll see the 17-plus speakers that got up, all opposed to the amphitheater because of noise. And if you want to represent your residents in what we want, opposed to what business owners may want, I would highly suggest that you wait to vote tonight and maybe take all this in, think about it, and vote at the next city council meeting. I really don't understand what the hurry is. And lastly, what Carol touched on with the decibel limit, to me, it's very concerning that there's no decibel limit in the ordinance. The valley echoes in many different ways, as many residents know, and, you know, there was a recent article in Living Snoqualmie that referred to only downtown residents being affected, but the Millsite is right at the bottom of the Parkway, and all that noise is going to travel upward. And we only have about three good months of weather a year, and I'd really like to enjoy my backyard on Friday and Saturday nights. I don't want to hear boom, 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 and have to shut my windows on a hot summer night to appease a developer or a few people that are hanging out at the Bindle Stick. So I really hope that our city will reconsider this ordinance. I personally believe without a decibel limit, it should be absolutely left as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neither. Lisa Boyce.
I live up on the ridge too, in the Ironwood area, and I'm here tonight, my husband and I did write an email to all of you regarding the noise ordinance issue, and so I'm just here in person to say again, we are against it, because when we bought here, we wanted this rural feel, and wanted this better community, rural feel, and if we wanted noise and activity, we would move to the city areas. And this is, so this is different. This area is different than a city type of setting, and I think should be left at 10, we do feel that it should be left at 10:00 p.m. and not moved to 11:00 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Neither. Carol Fixx.
Yes, Carol Fixx, I live in the area just north of the Millsite, 40307, southeast 53rd Street. And I would like to thank the city staff for sending the public notice to the people outside of the city limits that would be potentially affected and high and increased by extending the hours for noise. So the proposal before you is to allow additional public disturbance noise, which is additional public disturbance. And my question to you is why we would want more public disturbance? To whom will this noise disturb disturbance, and to whom will it be beneficial? By definition, the noise is a disturbance to the public. The public notice states that the extended disturbing noise will be sponsored by businesses, presumably to their financial benefit rather than the benefit of the citizens of Snoqualmie and the surrounding area. The businesses referred to in the notice includes the form-based mixed-use district. I could find no explanation on the city website of what this district includes. Could this include the proposed amphitheater on the Millsite? What do other events, in quotes, include? Dirtfish, perhaps? And what other sources of noise would the city be opening its doors to? Any outdoor event continuing until 11:00 p.m. would require considerable outdoor lighting. Now, the Parkway and many Snoqualmie Ridge neighborhoods do not have streetlights. The parks are not lit at night. Do we really want to include this can of worms in this consideration because it would need to be? So as you evaluate the proposal, I would ask you to include these concerns in your consideration. Once one allowance or exception is made for one applicant, it will be difficult to deny other promotions the same exception. This would set a precedent to extend noise from all sorts of sources, not implied in this original variance. You could consider the historical precedent of Dirtfish. When it first opened, the residents in the surrounding area were told that it would operate only on weekdays during daytime business hours, and now treated to their noise all weekends long. So also consider the public outcry about the noise from the earlier days of the Snoqualmie casino concert series. The casino has clearly survived with earlier start times and restricted decibel levels. Please also consider that additional noise would affect people outside the city limits. This would be particularly true for disturbance noise emanating from the proposed Millsite into the surrounding rural areas, and that residents of these areas will not have the benefit of directing the policies of the city through the ballot box. It's necessary to include the consideration of additional lighting...
If you could conclude your comments.
I have about 40 more seconds, if you can bear with me.
Carol, I'm sorry I can't, I didn't do it with all the speakers if I did that. It's Robert's rules of orders, you've got to kind of stick to the protocol and be fair with all of them. You can certainly submit the written record if you, if that's...
I have it here. I would like to make one more point. Anyway, there's also the businesses that could be affected, both the Snoqualmie Lodge and any additional hotels.
All right, thank you, Carol. Great to join you. Carol, good to see you back. For those that don't know, Carol spent many years serving on the planning commission years ago, putting a lot of good hours to make a better community. All right, next is Tim Wilbur.
My name's Tim Wilbur. I reside at 5540 396 Drive, Southeast, Snoqualmie, in the same neighborhood as Carol does. I sent a letter to city council members on July 5th, and I have the opportunity to interact with the mayor today with a couple of different emails, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. In reading the ordinance, there's a provision here where it says, whereas such concerts and activities hosted downtown in the Ridge businesses are integral to the business, social, and economic well-being of the city, and merit a reasonable extension of the hours during which noise may be admitted. I'm not sure who came to that conclusion, but I disagree. My family disagrees, and my neighbor disagrees. Extending these musical events from 10 o'clock to 11... To my knowledge, no other municipalities in the region allow public disturbance noises to extend past 10:00 PM. I don't see any reason for our community or our city to establish a trend in that area. Allowing public disturbance noise to extend past 10:00 PM will upset sleeping patterns and interfere in the public's way of life. Approving this amendment to the noise ordinance will effectively open the door for the Mill Site developers to expect and demand that they are granted the same right as other businesses within the city to emit public disturbance noises until 11:00 PM. We're opening up Pandora's Box. Bottom line, this amendment makes a bad ordinance even worse. The current ordinance fails to provide any means to determine what constitutes a public disturbance. Any sound which, and that's defined as, any sound which unreasonably either annoys, injures, interferes with, or endangers peace, comfort, tranquility, sleep or repose, health or safety of the community or neighborhood.
Mr. Wilburn, if you could please conclude your comments.
Yes, thank you. My question to the city council is how are you supposed to measure that? How is Bob supposed to direct Chief Fips to direct their officers to define what constitutes the definition of that ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Wilburn. You can submit your comments and write in if you'd like. Russell Dunn.
Hello, I'm Russell Dunn, and I live right behind the clock office at P.O. Box 416. My biggest concern is that there is a proposed bar sitting right in front of our neighborhood. If that's open until 11 o'clock for noise ordinance, I don't have a home anymore. All I have is a place to put my head down after 12 o'clock when everybody leaves and it's not their home anymore. And I agree with everything everybody else said. This is a little town. We moved here to be a little town, not be Seattle town. I'm the living bell town, I should have lived in bell town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Cindy Geigler? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Cindy Geigler. I reside at 36103 Southeast 53rd Street, and I agree with every comment that was made this evening. You know, unfortunately, people's sleep cycles are not seasonal, and everybody needs to get the rest of the night. I live right on the parkway, and since all the development of the homes over in Deer Park and that, with the loss of those trees, I can hear a hum grow in the freeway. I've actually had to get an air filter, and we're going to be changing out the windows in the back of our house to help reduce just that small little hum of noise that you can hear from the freeway. Having that type of sound, the music can sound until 11 o'clock, it's disruptive, and there's no reason to have any type of that sort of noise going until 11 o'clock. But in essence, it's going to be even one more reason that I would want to move away from the valley, just like everybody else. We moved here because we want a rural feel. We didn't want the redmond, we didn't want the Issaquah. We don't want Snoqualmie turning into that. We like how Snoqualmie is now. Small development that would be beneficial to the city, I'm for it, but any type of huge type of development, an applicator up over here, a trucking hub, there's already enough noise on the parkway. It's just taking away the feel of the city, and by adding this, extending the noise, I don't know how much it's going to make. I live right on a golf course. Fourth of July, we heard from the speakers from the golf course all the way up until 10 o'clock, and it was like we were right on the golf course, listening to this big booming noise. That goes on until 11 o'clock, there's going to be a whole lot of neighborhoods, or people in those neighborhoods that are going to be affected by just someone talking over their mic. So I urge you, along with all these other people, I'm sure, please do not extend it to 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tepper. That's it for the sign up sheet, however. Is there anyone else that has any chance to sign up? Yeah, wait. You can just state your name and have it for record, please.
This is scary. My name is Christina Stumbler, and I live at 36603 Southeast Woody Creek Lane, right down the street from Fisher Park. And all I have to say is, I don't leave my dogs outside barking for my neighbors to hear past 8:00 PM at night because it's disruptive. And I can hear all the concerts, I can hear all the noise. Some nights, it's nice, it's soothing. And then other nights, like one of the other people said, it's not music that I like so much, so it's not soothing. But my point is, I don't leave my animals outside to disrupt my neighbors and my neighborhood, so I would hope that my neighbors and my neighborhood would respect me and my feelings just the same and not have all the loud noise going on past 10:00 PM. Thank you.
Could you please spell your name real quick for the record, the last name?
Oh, S.T.E.M.B.L.E.R. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that did not get a chance to sign up for the record?
Hi there, my name is Dan Stokes. I live on 825 Maple Road, right on Snoqualmie Avenue. We have a two-year-old daughter. We moved here from Philly, and we really enjoy living in a nice, quiet neighborhood. That being said, every night that the Bindle Stick had music, I open up my windows and I enjoy the sound of that, the culture and the community that is down in front of us to our downtown. And I think there's a delicate balance to try to where, talking about amphitheater and talking about Bindle Stick are two very different things. And I'm not against developing, I'm not against growing this town, but I think we have to be reasonable and respectful about the way we do it. And I don't think we should extend the hours, but I also don't think we should overlook the valley that is down in front of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris Thompson. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Steve Ossman. I'm at 34916 Rota Denning Drive in Snoqualmie. I just have four comments. Number one is, I think that before this issue is actually voted on, I'd ask for a review of the ordinance all up. The reason I say that is, I've spent some time looking at the ordinances for other communities in the area, pretty much every community on the east side. The interesting thing is, if you look at our ordinance, it's inconsistent with the rest of the ordinances in that from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning till about 10 o'clock at night, there is no noise ordinance. You can be as loud as you want. And I think that that's inconsistent with the feedback from the community, where we generally want to live in peace. And so before this is reviewed and voted on, I'd ask for an all-up review. I'm happy to provide the ordinances from the other communities if it would be helpful, and I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Yeah, we'd be happy if that's copied as a that right there. Welcome to submit it to the city. Is there anybody else?
No.
All right, one, twice. Seeing no one else come forward, the public meeting is now closed. We were going to move on to a presentation from Lizzie Billings, and I understand that there are some technical difficulties, we're going to push that on.
We'd have to put it off for two weeks until the county council. We just couldn't difficulty with it. It's an interesting time for other issues that are on the next agenda.
True. All right, with that, we'll move on to consent agenda. All items listed below will be enacted by one motion. Action items include minutes for the June 26, 2017 regular city council meeting, for the July 3, 2017 special joint meeting with the Community Development Council Committee, and approval of warrants as stated in the agenda pack. Other approvals include Agenda Bill 17097, 2018, and 2022 regional animal services and the local agreement. Do I have a motion, council?
I'll move.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as stated. Is there any discussion, council? Seeing no one move forward, we move on to ordinances. Community Development Committee, Agenda Bill 17094. Ordinance amending Snoqualmie Municipal Code Section 9.36.020 to provide for a seasonal exception to public disturbance noise limitations for musical and other events sponsored by downtown and Ridge businesses and providing for separability and effective date. This is, was introduced on June 26th and is ready for action tonight.
Snoqualmie Municipal Code Section 9.36.020 currently provides that noise emanating from.
Counselor Republican, summary statement was missed, written last time, so you can just go after the motion if you go.
Yeah, okay. All right, move to adopt ordinance 1189.
1189.
Amending Snoqualmie Municipal Code Section 9.36.020 to provide for a seasonal exception to public noise disturbance, I'm sorry, exception to public disturbance noise limitations for musical and other events sponsored by downtown and Ridge businesses and providing for separability and an effective date.
Do you have a second? Seconding what? If there's no second, the motion dies. If I'd like a motion.
So I.
All right, I have a motion, a second, to approve Agenda Bill 17, ordinance 1189, stated by Counselor Republican. Any discussion, council?
Yeah, I'd like to start with just a little bit of background. So this came out of the Community Development Committee, and so a lot of the discussion around this request that came forward from staff is that, is the behavior of noise itself. And as a committee not having, you know, all of the information about how noise travels around the valley and up in Snoqualmie Ridge, there were several things that the committee discussed. I can assure you that one of the things that was not discussed was the Mill Site, that this was a Snoqualmie business, a part of our community, and a resident of our community who came to staff and asked us to consider the change. And so the, so I think the Community Development Committee was willing to do that. The notification that went out was, I think, again, taking into consideration the nature of sound and the council and city staff not knowing what the effect, how you may hear things, you know, in different parts of the valley, and so making sure that everybody was notified and could come and give feedback.
Beyond the typical 500 feet.
Right, exactly. Yeah, beyond the typical 500 feet. So we've gotten, you know, a fair amount of feedback. I have some thoughts on this, which I guess I'll take the opportunity to go into. I don't, I personally have an issue with this, and the reasoning is simple, is that for one business to come forward and propose something to the city, I think, in my view, is welcome, and for us to have some discussion around it is welcome. But I have not seen any support from other businesses or even like businesses within Snoqualmie that made that.